Welcome to the She's Bold Podcast. I'm Beth Whitman. Hi friends, thanks for joining me for another episode of the She's Bold Podcast. I can't tell you how thrilled I am to know you're out there listening. Thank you, thank you. The She's Bold Podcast is where I feature one-on-one in-person conversations with some very inspirational women. These are bestselling authors, travelers, adventurers, photographers, musicians, athletes, doctors, spiritual practitioners, and more. While they have a wide range of backgrounds and interests, they all have inspirational stories to share. In every episode, you're going to take away some gem, some pearl of wisdom that will make you look at your own life in a new way. Today's conversation is with Jean Godden. Jean is a journalist, a former Seattle City Council member, and the author of Citizen Jean: Riots, Rogues, Rumors, and Other Inside Seattle Stories. She's been part of my world in one way or another for pretty much my entire time here in Seattle, and that's going on about 30 years now. Now, it was first as a journalist where she was at the Seattle Post Intelligencer, and then she moved over to the Seattle Times, and then finally, more recently, as a Seattle City Council member. I've been really interested in having her on the podcast because she has been such a visible presence and influence in the Seattle area. But it wasn't until I started really researching her that I discovered that she's 88, and she's still very active on many levels. And that's when I really, really wanted to have her on the podcast. I am so grateful to have had the opportunity to chat with her and learn firsthand about her background and what has made her such a special woman, and what keeps her going and inspired. So in this conversation, we chat about what led her to becoming a Seattle City Council member at 71, when most people are retiring, right? And what she accomplished during her 12 years on the council. We also dive into her background and what it was like growing up, having lived in 116 places with her family. And no, they weren't fugitives on the run. This was all while she was growing up. And that was before she finally settled in Seattle, where she's been quite, been here quite a long time. Also, in this conversation, you're going to hear her secret to longevity. Before I get to that conversation, a reminder that if you like what you're hearing in these episodes, if you appreciate the fact that I'm bringing you these conversations most weeks, you can support me on Patreon. Patreon supporters show their support with a monthly pledge of just $5 or more a month. When you're a Patreon supporter, you have a chance to join our private Facebook group and participate in the conversation there. Now, I share some behind-the-scenes details about the podcast, and also give you a chance to submit questions to guests in advance. You also have access to bonus content, which is generally in the form of a question I ask the guest, and I reserve it just for Patreon supporters. In the case of today's guest, Jean Godden, you're going to hear about her retirement plans. And that's only for Patreon supporters. And remember, she's 88, so she's got something to say about retirement. I also want to take a moment to give a shout out to Anna B., who is our most recent Patreon supporter. I love to hear from listeners. And in addition to joining our Patreon community, Anna sent me the kindest note, letting me know how inspired she is by every episode, even when she thinks the topic may not be right up her alley. She connects with some bit of info on each episode, she said, and really, I hope that you do too. If that is the case, please join us on Patreon. Why aren't you there now? You should be. Pause this. Go over to Patreon. By showing your support this way, you can get a little more involved with the podcast and this fabulous community. Check out she'sboldpodcast.com/patreon for details. Okay, with that, please enjoy this conversation with Jean Godden. What is your next book about?
It'll mostly be the stories that I didn't get around to putting in the first book.
So you have, you have another story or three?
Yes, I do.
To tell us, is that right? So, you know what? I want to dive right in, because you're holding the book there. I would love to just kind of dive right in. I want to dive right in because you have the book right there and find out. The book is, the book is called Citizen Jean.
Yes.
And why that name? And what's the, I know it's, it's stories from your time as a Seattle City Council person and your time here in Seattle. But why Citizen Jean?
Well, because I had an argument with my publisher, and I had a working title, Confessions of a Badass Bitch. And I thought it was a very good title, because that was what the stranger called me, was a badass bitch. And I thought, well, I should just embrace that.
Right.
I mean, that sounds like me, I thought.
Did they mean it lovingly?
They did, actually, which is not oftentimes for the stranger. Usually they, usually they're pretty snarky.
Yeah, they are.
But I think they meant this well, because they knew that I cared very much, for instance, about paid parental leave and some of the other things that I had worked on. And they felt that I was somebody who wouldn't give up.
So you had a different title for it, and the publisher came in and said, oh, we got to tone that down a little bit.
Well, we spent a whole month emailing back and forth. This is WSU Press, Washington State University Press. And we had a month of emails back and forth, and they came up with all kinds of ideas. And finally, they decided on Citizen Jean. They thought maybe it said it all. And because of the fact that we have a column that says riots, rogues, rumors, and others, Seattle stories, is sort of, it sort of tells what we're about.
It wraps it up.
And also, they picked the picture. I was, I offered them, oh, maybe a dozen pictures. And they liked this one.
Right, because it's you at the market with the fish.
Yes.
You're the big fish.
Yes, that is a big fish. And I was holding it. People say, oh, that's photoshopped, but it's not a bit.
You know, one of the things that resonates so much with me in terms of the title of the book, is that just, I would say relatively recently, I've come to understand and kind of hear this term when people say, like, a citizen scientist, or a citizen fill-in-the-blank, someone who is, it doesn't, they don't make it their profession, but they are doing something, they are following a path or a hobby that, that really contributes to the greater good, or contributes to the community or society. And I think that's very much, that very much encapsulates you and what you have done over the years here in Seattle. I've been here about, just about 30 years. I moved out here from New Jersey. And for as long as I can remember, you have been, I don't want to say on my radar, but you've been somewhere in my subconscious, because I know you were with the newspapers for a long time, and then you were on the Seattle City Council for a long time. So I've always, you know, I've always seen Jean Godden. You know, I've always seen your name.
Well, it is kind of nice to be noticed. I know that even today, I can go into a grocery store, produce department, and somebody will say, you look familiar. Where do I know you from? And it turns out probably that it was a column that I wrote years ago. And I haven't written for the Times since '03, so that's a long time ago for them to remember me.
Yeah.
But you do have to realize that in those days, I was in the newspaper four days a week.
Yeah.
Four columns a week for 20 years.
Now, were those op-eds? What were you writing about then?
Oh, I wrote about Seattle. I always wrote about Seattle.
Okay. But you, so you're writing news, news about Seattle, what was happening?
Well, it was little tidbits about Seattle, for the most part. Sometimes I'd have eight different items in a single column. You would have bold faces for people's names. It was very much like, well, Jimmy Breslin, Herb Kane, Emmett Watson, people like that who wrote about the city.
So what is it, what I'd love to do here is kind of find out what you're doing now, and then, and then go back in time a little bit and kind of talk about how you got here. Because you are, you're such an inspiration, like I said, because you, you are such an institution here in Seattle, and...
Well, I hate to be an institution. I hope I'm a person.
You're, well, no, 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 no. I guess there's got to be a better term for that, but you're, and you're, you're more of a wordsmith than I am. So maybe, you're an icon. How about that?
Well, thank you. That's kind. But badass is good, too.
You're the badass. Okay. You're the badass, the badass bitch in Seattle. That's great. So you are working on a new book, and that's going to, that will cover many of the other stories that you have of your time here in Seattle. And, and you're also writing for, is it the West Seattle?
It's West Side Seattle.
West Side Seattle.
Which is a combination of four community newspapers from Ballard to Burien on the west side of the city. Of course, I live on the east side, but that didn't matter to the people who wanted me to write for them.
Right, of course. And it must be fun to just, to look at it, maybe from a little bit of an outside perspective, and see, see what's going on in another part of the city as well.
Yes, that's true.
How often do you write that column?
Once a week.
Okay. And then what else are you working on? As if that's not enough with your book?
I also, also have a radio station. We have a program on a radio station, 101.1 FM. It's a low-power community station, and it is located, the station is in Magnuson Park. But we are heard, we understand, all the way from Kirkland to Sea-Tac, which is quite a distance. It's a three-mile or more radius. And even at that, why, we seem to make quite a distance.
Do you know anything about your audience for that?
Well, you know, I don't. I wish I did know more. From time to time, I run into people who say, oh, I heard you the other day. And why didn't you ask about that? And that kind of thing. But aside from having people call in, and apparently, we are going to be able to have a call-in feature at some point. That's one we're working on. We're also working on getting the antenna fixed, because it's on top of the School of Communications at the University of Washington. And oddly, I don't get it at my house, which is across Burke-Galman Trail from the Magnuson Park.
Right. You're, so you're, you're like, literally across the street, you're broadcasting, and you can't even get it.
Well, that's true. Fortunately, we do have a website. You can go to thebridgeseattleradio.com. And you can get streaming from all the older, former, earlier programs that we have done. We are now on our 71st program.
And you're doing that weekly?
Weekly.
Oh, good for you. My goodness.
We did take off a couple of days. We did take off Thanksgiving, for instance, was a Thursday. We didn't do it on Thursday, Thanksgiving. So then we run older shows on those occasions.
Right. So you're keeping yourself quite busy.
Oh, I'm always busy.
And you have children and grandchildren, and I believe?
I do, and great-grandchildren, yes.
Yeah, so they keep you busy as well. Are most of them in this area?
Well, some of them are. One of, I have a son who shares a house with me, and another son who lives nearby, and a grandson who lives in West Seattle, and a grandson who lives in California. And then I have great-grandchildren in Austin, Texas, where they, they, they had to go because their mother works for Amazon, and that is where Whole Foods is located.
Oh, right, yeah. I'm actually headed to Austin tonight on a red-eye.
Oh, really? Austin is a fun town.
It is, yeah. And it's not Texas, as they say.
Yeah, that's true.
Even though it's in Texas. So let's go back a little bit, because I would love to know kind of what brought you to this point. You love to write.
I do.
You love to, and I'm putting words in your mouth now, but you, you're, I would imagine that you love to contribute to the community, because that's exactly what you're doing.
Well, yes. As a matter of fact, there was a spell there. Before I finished my degree, I had started my college degree at Northwestern in the Midwest, because it would be close to wherever, wouldn't, it would be in the middle of the country, and my father was in the military, and I wouldn't be too far from home. And then it turned out that he was ordered to Seattle. So it was quite a distance. But I took two years there, and then I was the news editor at a community newspaper, and decided that I would stay, even though I had thought of it as a summer job. And I would finish my education at the University of Washington. Well, it took me a few years. But when I finally did that, why?
And was that at the journalism school?
At, that was the School of Communication at the time. I started in journalism and ended up in communication.
What, what were the years back then when you were in school?
Well, way, way, way back when, this would have been the 50s, the first career.
Right, right, the first.
And by the time I got back, it was the late 60s, early 70s, by which time I'd had a couple of kids and done a lot of community stuff.
Right. So when you, so when you, so in the 50s, you were going to communication school, you're saying?
No, journalism.
So journalism. And then, when you said, when you had the kids, you were going back to school at that point?
Not until they were in school, too.
So you, oh, I see. So you actually returned and went back for another?
Well, I was my husband's bookkeeper during those years. He was an artist, a commercial artist. And I did do his bookkeeping, and I did a lot of community activities, and then raised a couple of kids.
And then you went back to school?
Yes.
Okay. I had read that you were among just a couple of women at your journalism school. Is that correct?
Oh, yes.
In your class?
Yes. When I was there at Northwestern, there were only two.
What was that like? And what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, in that circumstance, was that just Jean in class doing your thing? Or was it very noticeable that you were one of just, you know, a couple of women, and that, that you had to fight your way through the system?
It was very difficult. I do remember one professor who started out his lecture, his opening day of class, and said that he had never given a woman an A, and he wasn't about to do it now. And instead of being, you know, incensed, as I should have been, I guess I figured it was the time, and I just worked all that much harder. And I got As on my midterm, and As on my, my project, and I was...
From him?
From him.
As from him.
But I got the B in the class.
Oh, no kidding.
He, it was typography. We had to memorize all the typefaces.
Can you imagine today?
And we had to put out our own paper, our own front page.
Yeah.
By hand, we had to send it. But I got, I got the B.
But that didn't incense you? That just fueled you?
Well, I, I was unhappy about it, but I guess I didn't know I should do a class action shoot, because I'm not even sure you could have in those days.
No, I'm sure not. Different times. When you look at the things that are going on today, where, like with the Me Too movement, do you think that, I'm trying to relate it to your experience, where you just hunkered down and you made your way through it. So do you look at what's happening today, and you say, finally, like, this is, we're finally getting payback for all of this?
Oh, I'm very, very excited about it. I think it's so good to be now. I mean, it's so good to see so many more women running for office and winning. It's so good to be a time when women can speak out and be believed. Very often in the old days, why, then they would feel that it was, oh, probably not true.
Right. Well, I think we still get a lot of that. That, I mean, that is happening a lot, just in terms of what happens in the workplace, and with rape cases, and that sort of thing. But it's changing slowly. So there's, there...
Well, it's taking time. And you are very sad about it, because of the fact, if you look at, see the difference in the payback gap between women's salaries, the average woman versus the average man, that's still a very great amount. And you think, well, if you only get so many cents per year, it'll be 100 years before we're paid exactly right. We have to work on that.
Right, yeah. We just have to take over the system.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Like you said, you know, there's more women now who are running for office. So some of that's changing, for sure. So after you completed journalism school, you joined, was it the Seattle PI at that point?
The PI, yes. Yes, I went almost immediately from getting my degree to getting on the Seattle PI.
And how long were you there?
I was there 17 years.
And then, did you leave when everything just kind of folded and collapsed there?
No, actually, I left in 1991, when the PI was having a little bit of a cutback, and it was very sad. And I guess I had assumed that I would stay at the PI as long as they would have me. I had a column. And at that point, why, the Times offered me a job. Take my column to the Times, and I would be paid as much as the men, which I was not at the PI. And so money made a point, but it was also the fact that we were going to be laying off 12 people, and I could save one job, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it seemed like a bit to me.
So you moved over to the Times?
I was. And I was there 12 years.
What was your departure from there like? Did you, was it into retirement as a journalist?
No. What happened was, I decided to run for office. At the time, there was some kind of corruption, you might say, at the, at the Seattle City Council. And I was writing about it. And I became incensed, and I thought, you know, I guess I always thought I could do that job. And I asked a friend, I made the mistake of asking a friend who's a political consultant. And she said, oh, well, I'll take an overnight survey. It'll cost you money, but it'll see, you can see whether or not you have a chance. And she did. And the night before, the final filing date, she called up and said, you have four times a positive
Wow.
of the incumbent.
Uh-huh. Oh, my goodness.
Who had been up to no good, accepting money for a spot rezone for her reelection.
Who was that?
Her name was Judy Macastro. And she had actually been a fairly good councilperson, but she just had a blind eye corruption, I would say.
Was, was that corruption in the council, was that beyond her? Like, when you were writing these columns, was, was it kind of widespread throughout the council, or?
Well, what happened was, there was a strip club in Lake City that wanted to have a parking lot extension, a spot rezone, just a spot of property that they owned, so that they could have a bigger parking lot. And so they took her out to have a meal. And she was Chair of the Land Use Committee at the time, and she proposed the spot rezone, and they did well-fund her campaign. And it was kind of odd, because what happened was that she sent out a press release to say how much money she'd raised in the month of May. And it was a rather large amount. And I thought, I wonder where she's getting your money from? And fortunately, we have transparency in Seattle. And I was able to see that it was the Colacoccios who owned the strip club, who had donated a great deal of money, all of a sudden. And I was very incensed, because I had thought, you know, Seattle was a pretty clean city, and this was not clean.
Do you still think it is?
I do.
Do you?
Oh, yes. I think spot rezones are very, I mean, why would you do that?
Well, I just mean, in general, in terms of, when you said Seattle's a clean city, I'm assuming you mean just in terms of corruption?
Yes.
And you still think that it is a clean city?
I do, for the most part. I think that we have some very, very strict laws. And we do, we do have transparency. We can find out where money is coming from. And that does make a difference to people when they're voting.
Yeah, but when we vote, it seems like we might vote for something, and something completely different happens.
Oh, I see what you mean. You think promises are important.
Well, I'm talking about, yeah. Oh, no, gosh, I wouldn't go that far. Yes, I do think promises are important. But I think more importantly is, when we sit down to vote, and the stadiums come to mind for me. How many votes did we have on, on the stadium? On the, was it Safeco Field, I think? Or, I can't even remember. We've got two stadiums in the downtown area, right?
And we're going to have three.
Well, I know we are, but I think we've been voting those down, and they keep coming back on the ballot. And they go through, even though we're voting them down. So that, to me, I view that, I throw up my hands, because it doesn't matter how I vote. That's how I perceive it.
Well, I think you were right, and it's to a certain extent. And I think people felt that way. The people voted down Safeco Field, when it was Safeco Field, that was now, now, of course, it's, it's, it's not...
Is it Verizon or Mobile, T-Mobile or something?
T-Mobile now. But anyway, it was Safeco Field for many years. And when the opportunity to construct it came, the city of Seattle, the citizens voted it down. It was the state that decided that we should have it. And so we did. They managed to figure out how to pay for it with a tax on hotel rooms and rental cars. And this was done at the state legislative level. It was not voted on. The vote came when it came to the other stadium, Clink Stadium, the Seahawk Stadium.
Right.
And that was a statewide vote, and the people voted yes statewide.
Isn't that the one that they pushed through, like in August, when everybody was on vacation? It was a, was it a Paul Allen thing, or?
Well, yes, it was a Paul Allen thing. But as far as the August votes are concerned, they decided that some years ago. It used to be September when I first ran. The primary was always in September, and now it's in August. And it makes people very unhappy to think about the fact that that happens, you know, in the summertime. But the reason for the August vote is that you want to have a certain number of weeks between the primary and the general. And if you went, ran in September...
I can see that.
Why you only have a very few weeks.
Where do you get your information from right now?
Where do I get my information from? Well, I take the Seattle Times, and I take the New York Times, and I read a lot of newspapers. And of course, I take West Side Seattle, which is really great to have. And of course, look at anything that, gosh, is printed. I love it. And of course, the internet.
So do you, do you have the New York Times, the printed version of it, delivered to you?
I do.
Okay.
I do. I get it daily delivered, which is a terrible expense, but it's worth it.
Well, you have an incredible view here. And I can imagine just sitting with your coffee and your biscuits and...
Exactly.
And reading, kicking back and reading it, yeah. What would you suggest a person like me do? And, and so, you know, we've been talking about Seattle, but, but, but listeners are from all over. It's, it is dismaying what is happening in politics right now, because I will say for myself, it's hard to know who to trust because of this transparency. You know, we're peering behind the curtain, and we're seeing kind of what, quote unquote, really happens, you know, just the, the reality of it. And it's not pretty. It was almost nicer when we didn't really know, when we kind of suspected, but we didn't really know what was going on. What would you say to someone like myself, in terms of educating myself without being depressed over it, and, and participating on some level? You know, you're writing about it. You're educating yourself, and you're writing, and you have that voice, you have that platform. But for the average person, we don't.
Well, it's very important, of course, to find out about things before you vote. And it's very, very important to vote. So often, it's, the problem is that people don't vote. In fact, we look at some of the numbers, and we find out that a lot of people were not satisfied with the choice between Hillary and Donald Trump. And they simply didn't vote. And this is what elected Trump in a lot of respects.
Well, that's true. But also, there are people who voted only to come find out that their, their representatives didn't vote for the, for the candidate that won in that state. So, and I can't tell you exactly which states it was, but...
Oh, you mean the electors?
Yes, yes.
Oh, well, that's true here. There were a couple of them, and they were fined a lot of money.
Oh, they were fined?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
The reason you don't know that is because the thing that happened, it became a story, and then it took so long for it to go through the system. And so by then, people didn't notice.
Page 12. Yeah, okay. Well, that's good to know.
But they were fined.
Okay. So hopefully, that will prevent that from happening in the future.
I think it would.
I see. Okay.
In a way, you think about the fact that the reason why they could do that is because there was always the thought that what would happen if you elected someone who went crazy thereafter or died? You would want the electors to at least have the ability to make an informed choice at that point.
I see. Okay. So there, there is some reasoning.
There's some excuse.
There is some reasoning behind it that actually makes sense.
Yes, it does.
I get it. Okay. It has to take a certain level of confidence to do what you do, because you're very opinionated.
Oh, yes.
And you're not afraid to express it. Where did your confidence come from?
I don't know. Possibly, in growing up in a strange way. My, my father was in the service. He was in the service of a different sort. It's, it was called the Coast and Genetic Survey, which is now known as NOAA. And because, he made charts and maps for the government. It's a very old service. And because of that, we moved very often, when I was growing up. I went to 16 schools before I got to college. And in my very, very early years, why, we lived in tents and trailers and tourist homes.
Where?
While he did the surveying for the TVA.
What's the TVA?
The Tennessee Valley Administration.
And so the, so the surveying, now you mentioned NOAA. And so the, so the surveying, now you mentioned NOAA, but, and NOAA is specifically oceanic. Is that correct?
No, it isn't. It's also land survey.
Oh, I didn't know that. So, so he was doing both.
In fact, you will see sometimes when you go to a special point, say maybe Pike's Place or even Mount Rainier, you will see a little, kind of a little marker in the ground. And it will tell you that this is, you know.
It's been surveyed or?
It's been surveyed. And you can even write in and find out, you know, what the, the particular landmark, where it is in the world.
Yeah. So how old were you when you were moving around so much?
Well, from the time that I was born in Connecticut, believe it or not, till the time that I finally went to school the first time, as a matter of fact, in New Jersey.
Oh, you did.
Jersey City. My father was doing a special job for the New York World's Fair of 1939. And they were bearing a time capsule to be dug up in 5,000 years.
Oh, my goodness.
And he had to find out where it was they were putting it exactly, so they could find it.
Is it still there?
I suppose. It hasn't been 5,000.
I know it hasn't, but there's probably a mayor who's gone in and dug it up.
Nope. I don't think so. As a matter of fact, my father said that he was rather concerned about the geology and that would probably be, you know, go down the East River.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, right. I can imagine. So for your lifetime, you were just moving around. You didn't know anything different. Do you have siblings?
Indeed. When I came to Seattle, or when my parents, my father was stationed here in Seattle, I had lived 116 places.
Oh, my goodness.
My mother kept a list.
You have siblings?
Yes, one brother.
How old is he?
He's two years younger.
And so, so you had somebody to kind of pal around with?
Well, I don't know that you don't pal around with your two-year-old, younger brother, do you?
Well, you know what? If you're, I can only imagine that if you're in a circumstance where you're changing schools all the time, that at least there was that constant with somebody, someone nearly your own age.
That's true. And you know, when you're very, very young, you don't know that everybody doesn't do this. It doesn't seem odd at all.
You didn't feel torn away each time you left?
Well, I did when I got older. I mean, we were really, really happy if we could spend the entire year in one school.
So 116 places, you're moving, I can't quite do the math, but you're moving.
Well, from the time I was, really from the time I was born until the time I was in school for the first time at age five, we moved every 10 days to two weeks.
My jaw is dropping here.
I know. It's true. And I can't imagine how my mother managed.
Were you homeschooled then?
No, because until I was five, by then I went to school.
How did you get in and out of schools, though? Like you must have been constantly in different classes.
Well, no, when, by the time I was five, he had a, my dad had assignments. Didn't move quite that fast.
Okay.
But as I say, 16 schools.
That's just, that's incredible to me. Just given the stories that I hear about young people today, you know, who have such a hard time moving. And I realize it's different for teens than it might be for a.
Oh, it's different for everybody, but I think it's not easy. I mean, there would be times when you would make friends and you'd leave your friends and you would cry.
Do you keep in touch with anyone from those years?
Not an awful lot. From, 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 you know, sort of early days, there would be people that I would write to for periods of time, but mostly not. Oddly, you make new friends and even though you would keep up with the old friends for a couple, three years, maybe it would, you know, after that, it wouldn't be as important.
You'd move on. When was the first time you really kind of settled down and you were in one spot for a longer period of time? Was that when you went to, went to college?
No, because I was only there for two years at Northwestern. I mean, I suppose that was, is that settled down?
Two years was a long stretch for you.
For a long stretch. But no, it was coming to Seattle. I mean, I really don't have roots much of anywhere except here. And from then on, and after all, I've been here for quite a long time now.
So you were at the newspapers for, was it how long, 17 years?
I was 17 years at the PI and 12 at the time. And I was not writing a column the whole time at the PI. I started out on the editorial page and was on the editorial page for several years before I was asked to write a column.
And then you finally left there to run for city council.
That's right.
And can you, well, it's public knowledge, you were 71.
Yes, I know.
So.
I mean, it was, it was a stretch. Think about quitting a job and not having any idea whether you'd be able to do it. And it wasn't only the incumbent, but there were five men running as well. The incumbent was a woman and I was a woman. And the two of us did get through the primary, but there were seven people running for that job. The reason why, of course, was because of the fact that there had been some corruption. The, in a way, it wasn't as much the actual deed as it was the reaction of the person. In a lot of respects, that's often what happens. She said, oh, Seattle, you care about this. You are nothing but Mayberry with high rises. Hicktown, in other words. She was from New Jersey, by the way.
No comment on that.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've also, we've come a long way. No one would call us a hick town now, huh? Lots of changes. Did you think that you would win?
I, well, as I say, I had the political consultant who was helping me. And I didn't know for sure. And as a matter of fact, in the primary, I came in second, but not by very much. I had to wait two weeks for the recount.
Between the second, the third person?
Yes, yes. And so it was only 147 votes between me and the third person.
So you know the importance of voting. You know how important it is.
It is very, very important. And those two weeks were very, very difficult because it seemed like each day, each new count that would come in, there would be a few less votes and a few less votes. It was, it was very, very stressful. But I had to keep running because there was only six weeks between the primary then and the final.
Right. Right. Did you enjoy your time on the city council? That was 12 years, is that correct?
Yes, I enjoyed it very much. It was a really wonderful job. It was a terrible life, but a wonderful job.
How was it a terrible life?
Oh, you work all the time, 16 hours a day. And you're sure to make an awful lot of people unhappy who will tell you about it. And they should, of course.
Yeah. Do you pay attention to that?
Oh, yeah. You just, you just couldn't, you know, get morose about it, but you did notice it.
If you were on the city council now, or you were in, in, in public office, would you pay attention now? Because now there's so much more negativity. And, and it's easier for people to comment and to spout off negative things. Because I've always imagined if I was in that some, if that, that sort of position, I would just shut everything out and maybe have somebody filter through, you know, the information and let me know what's important. But I just couldn't pay attention to that.
Well, you do, you, you have to to a certain extent. I don't think that anyone else could, can take the hits. I think you need to do it. And I think you need to be there and be aware that you can't please everybody all of the time.
So it takes a really thick skin.
Well, it does. It really does. And I think, you know, sometimes when people haven't been used to that sort of thing, they become very, very upset. And I can understand why, but it, it goes with the job.
You see, I, I don't think I would be able to handle that. I mean, I, in some ways.
Why, you might.
Maybe. See, in some.
You kind of get used to it.
Whoa, yeah, I don't know if that's a good thing, though. To get used to it.
I know. We all want to be admired.
Well, yeah, but it's not even that. It's just, it's less about that than just, I wouldn't want to be attacked. And when I read, like I read the West Seattle Blog, right? And when I read the comments on that, I think, oh, my goodness, these people are so mean.
Well, it's true. I will say that in recent years, people found out how easy it is to be anonymous and to make those comments anonymously. And in, before that, I think it was necessary to have your name attached to it. And maybe that's what gave them the feeling that they could get away with, you know, saying just anything virtually. And surely we see that at the national level that has sort of given people an opportunity to be meaner. And that, I don't like to see that. But I don't know what you can do about it.
Yeah, there's no stopping it, is there?
No, I'm afraid not.
Yeah, I was just, I was listening to KUOW on the way over here. And they were talking about the impeachment of Richard Nixon compared to the impeachment process for our president, whose name I don't say aloud. And they were saying how back then, we had three news channels who were reporting relatively unbiased information and pretty much the same information.
True.
And so the, the country was kind of moving along with the process, almost of one mind. And now we are so divided because we are looking at different news channels and different sources of information, be it news or not. And, and that's what's, that's what the big difference is, is that we're just getting so much.
Probably is one of the differences, I think. It really was. Although I must say, the impeachment of Richard Nixon is very, very present in my mind, even though it was a number of years ago. It was a very difficult time. And I think.
Difficult for the country, you mean?
Oh, yes, yes, I think so. On the other hand, I think that it gave us confidence that the system works, which was very important.
That there's accountability with the presidency.
That there was accountability. And here I worry that there will not be as much feeling that the system worked. And yet it should, because we do have a system.
How do you see this playing out?
I don't know. It's very difficult to say. It looks as though you will get an impeachment vote in the House because of the fact that you have a plurality of Democrats. Some of them I don't think will vote for it because they are from what they call swing districts. And it may be too difficult for them to do. But I do think we will get that vote. I do think that the Senate unfortunately will not vote to remove the president, which is too bad. I would love to see people take a more statesmanlike, I don't like to say man's like, statesmanlike. And I, they would take a more global look and think about what their legacy is. But I'm not sure that that's going to happen. And then you will have a wounded president. And you will have a very, very nasty and probably prolonged fight for the presidency.
You mean?
For a new, for the next.
Oh, for the next election?
Election, the 2021.
Do you think he can hold on to his, his nomination or that, that he will actually run if he?
Oh, I think he probably will. I do knew, do, do think that what we have learned about the president is that he's not likely to do what Nixon did, which was to leave at the best time to do that.
Right.
And as a matter of fact, if he is impeached, by the way, and he were to be removed, Pence could not pardon him.
Because a vice president can't pardon him? Or because it's, it's an offense that is unpardonable?
Is unpardonable.
Do you get your information about this from the Times, the New York Times?
Yes, partly from the New York Times. Yes, certainly nationally, I read quite a bit about the New York Times. Although I do try and temper it by reading other news sources as well.
Breitbart.
I think, yes.
I'm just kidding. I know you're not reading Breitbart. So you're, to go back to my other, my question that I had asked a while ago, because I just want to reiterate this. You're, you think, your confidence level somehow comes from an unusual childhood of moving around? And you just, you probably had to just kind of buck up and make do.
Well, you had to be more self-sufficient. That's, there is, although I must say, my parents were extremely supportive. And certainly during those years of doing the surveying around, say, the Tennessee Valley area, I had both a mother and father there who were very supportive. And even occasionally when we were in tents, we even had relatives who would visit.
From other parts of the country?
Yes.
Oh, interesting.
I mean, when you live in a tent, do you think you're going to have house guests? Yes, yes.
Was it a large tent? Was it a family tent?
Well, actually, we were rich tenters. We had two tents. We had one tent for sleeping and another one for eating.
Like a dining tent then, yeah. And was it those, like a large, I'm imagining, large, almost like an army tent? Like the big green ones, big canvas ones?
Well, they were not that big probably, but they were tents. And as a matter of fact, there's a, at some point, if you want to look, I'll show you what they looked like.
Oh, I would love to. I'd love to see. Maybe I can take a snapshot of it and post it.
There's a, a picture down there of, out in the tents. Yes, we had tents. And as I say, we were rich tenters. There would always be a crew who would set up our tents for when we would move. And we'd take them down when we'd leave. And we had people who helped.
So your tents, that, where you were living, the tents would actually be moved around? So you, just as an example, you lived in a tent for maybe a year, but it was being, it was in different locations? I see. Okay. You just didn't have a camping spot?
We had the same bed.
Okay, yes, got it. Okay, interesting.
And of course, with the trailer, why, it was even more so. Although my mother always said she preferred the tents because we never had a cold while we were living in a tent. But we did when we were living in a trailer.
The fresh air, maybe.
May have been.
Nice air circulating around. Do you consider yourself to be bold?
Yes. Yes, really. Actually, when you think about it, quitting your job at 71 and running for office when you have no assurance of, you know, healthcare or anything else, there you are.
Well, in that case, you would have had, would you have had Medicaid or Medicare?
Well, you were allowed Cobra for six months. And by then I had gotten a job on the city council.
Okay. And did that provide insurance for you? Then health insurance? Okay, good.
Aren't you glad?
Yeah, I know. That is nice to know. Not from my own personal experience, I won't be running anytime soon, but I'm glad you were at least taken care of then.
Thank you.
You are 88.
Yes.
And again, I may not always just publicly say that without someone's permission, but it's public knowledge.
It's okay. You know, everyone knows it because it's very public.
It is very public.
And as a matter of fact, the last time I ran, that was probably the big reason that I did not succeed myself for the fourth time. I did have three terms and I should probably have decided there were other things I wanted to do at that point. But because of the fact that there are always so many more things that you want to do, I ran again. And as I say, I think it was probably age that made a difference. People thought they didn't want to elect somebody who was older.
So you think that it was used against you or do you think that?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
There was, there was one reporter, for instance, who actually should have been a friend of mine, who put my age in every time he used my name. And he did not do that with other people.
Yeah, that's a subtle way of influencing people, isn't it?
Oh, it was not very subtle. Got to be rather sticky, but oh, well.
He didn't say old lady Jean, at least.
Well, just about. Close to it.
Yeah. What's your secret to longevity?
Well, I don't know. I guess not die. I don't know. I went to aerobics two or three times a week, even when I was a council member, because I believe that you needed a certain amount of exercise. I think it's very important. I guess that I'm reasonably good in my habits. I gave up smoking many years ago. Believe me, the newsroom that I went to in the 70s was so full of smoke that you could get a black lung even if you didn't smoke.
I can only imagine.
So I gave up smoking and tried very hard to be, you know, shall we say, careful about any too many, too many beverages that might leave me feeling extra good.
Yeah, alter your mind a little bit.
Yes, yes.
Can we take a moment and explore the, the aging process? Because I'm really fascinated with it myself. And as long as you're open to it.
Certainly.
So they, they, they say, and I'm like, kind of quote, air quotes, they. I have heard it said that there is a person alive right now who could potentially live indefinitely.
Oh, well.
I've, I've heard the joke that, please let it be Ruth Bader Ginsburg.
Yes, yes, I think we all pray for her daily.
Yeah, but I don't think it's her.
And probably not the same God, but oh, well.
Right, yes, exactly. Um, but there is a young person alive now who will live to an age that we could never have imagined because
I think that would be true.
As that person turns a hundred, it'll be easy to live to a hundred and fifty or two hundred and, you know, with technology and, and all sorts of information that we have now. And, and, and aging is a, is something that I'm personally very interested in. For one, because, and I mentioned this to you before, I ran my first marathon at 50. And, and I talk about that because I think it's so important. I think a lot of people think that 50 is midlife. I think it used to be 35 or 40 was midlife, but we, but we look at as 50 maybe as midlife, maybe will live to be 80, 90, maybe will live to be a hundred. I fully expect to live at least to a hundred myself.
You should.
Yeah. And I think the
Particularly if you're doing marathons.
Yeah, yeah. As long as I can stay out of the traffic. But I think that the key with a lot of this is the, yes, it's a physical thing, like you mentioned aerobics. I, I think the physicality of it is very important. I think that the diet part of it is very important, just keeping your body running optimally. But I think so much of it is your brain. And we hear so much about Alzheimer's and dementia. How, like, do you think about that? Do you think about how to keep your brain healthy and active? Because
I, I guess so. I guess maybe that's why I play, uh, world, words with friends online with an old friend of mine. Um, and it's also, you know, writing all the time, uh, it does, uh, help you, I think.
And you're reading the newspapers too.
And reading newspapers.
So you're staying on top of things.
Yes.
Are there any other kind of secrets?
Things that you do? Well, you know, diet and
Do you take supplements?
Diet, exercise and, uh, uh, intellectual, uh, using that brain is important so you don't lose it.
Yeah, so just kind of as simple as that. It's not, you know.
It is for me anyway.
Yeah. I know sometimes we hear stories about, uh, somebody who lives, you know, lived to a hundred and two and, you know, she drank whiskey every day.
Yes, or Winston Churchill with his cigar and his, his drink.
Yeah. How, how long did he live?
Uh, actually quite a bit longer, for instance, than, than Franklin Roosevelt. I don't remember the exact age, but I think he was in eighties.
Okay. Yeah, well, oh gosh, it seems like a cigar would kill you. Take you out pretty quickly. I would say normal things. You're not, see, my husband and I were over there popping longevity pills.
Oh, really?
No, oh, yeah. There's a whole
There is one of them.
There are lots of those. There's a whole host of research that's going on right now, uh, with anti-aging supplements and things that, um, I won't get into all the details, but, but things that will kind of like rejuvenate your cells and clean out your old cells and kind of keep you youthful in that way. But you've just got a simple, it's just, it's a lifestyle.
No, you have to realize that one of my sons, the, the younger one is a, is a, is, has a PhD in, um, biochemistry. And he gives me a lecture all the time about various foods.
Well, what does he tell you?
And things of that sort. In moderation, one should do things in moderation. And, you know, things like, uh, too much salt, too much sugar.
Fried foods.
Too much, uh, fats of one sort and another. No, he's very, very good about that. In fact, uh, almost nanny-ish.
Is he the one that lives with you?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, somebody's watching out for you then.
That's true.
So you do have a secret.
Yes, that is a secret. But, you know, an irritant sometimes, but important.
Yes, exactly. Good. He's, he's just looking out for your, your wellbeing, so that's all good. You took on some big issues. I think you just kind of briefly mentioned this, but you took on some really big issues early on, I think it was in, in your city council days, if I'm not mistaken, when it was the, the parental pay?
Oh, the paid parental leave.
Right, the paid parental leave. Was that during the city council years?
Yes, yes, that was actually in my final term, I was, uh, in an elevator, uh, at city hall one day, and I, uh, was in there with the head of the, uh, intergovernmental relations committee, uh, office, uh, the one that lobbied the legislature and so forth. He said, "You've got to do something about this." We had seven babies in our little department this year and no parental paid leave. They had to put together things like unpaid leave, they had to put together things like unused, uh, vacation days in order to have even a week or two off with a brand new baby. Think of it, it's really kind of dreadful. And I said, "Well, I'll do what I can." At the time I was, I had been appointed to the mayor's gender wage gap committee. And we were trying to figure out why there was such a gap between women's wages and men's wages at the city.
What mayor was that?
That would have been McGinn. And he, uh, he was running for office against, uh, Mayor Murray, who later became Murray, became mayor. It was Ed Murray at the time, a legislator. And he said, "I will form a committee." And so he did. And I complained about the fact that his committee did not have anybody from labor or anybody from business on it, was mostly academics. And so I wrote him a note and said, "You really got to do something about this. This committee is not going to do a good job unless you have a little bit better representation." And so he, uh, ended up by appointing me to it. And so for the next nine months, we studied what was the problem and what we could do about it, because at the city there was quite a difference, not as much as in the general population. Seattle was one of the worst in the country. Twenty-seven cent difference, uh, between men and women. And we said it, found out at the city that we were only ninety cents on the dollar for each woman who worked. Uh, but nevertheless, we weren't happy about the fact that there wasn't equal pay for equal work. And so we started working on each of the departments and we discovered some departments were pretty good and others were very bad. The police department, the fire department and the law department were all bad. And so we talked about what we could do about this, how to equalize this. And it took us nine months. And we decided one of the things that was very, very important would be paid parental leave, because women would leave the, uh, the job when they had a child perhaps, or they would have a long gap.
And just not come back.
And not come back.
And so anybody, any new hires would
Yes.
Would come in at a lower rate.
Exactly, and they would come in and they wouldn't have the seniority.
Right.
And they wouldn't get paid as much. So we, that was one way we needed to fix it. We found, uh, we came up with a study that found ten different things. And one of the things was that we should survey it from time to time to see whether we were out of, out of, uh, compliance. Uh, the law department, interestingly enough, uh, when we did our budget, was getting a little bit more, and they used that money to make up the difference between men's wages and women's wages until they were almost exactly equal. So it can be done, but it is difficult.
And that was specifically for city departments?
That's right.
For the city?
That is right.
And then earlier, when we were talking offline, you mentioned that you folks really kind of paved the way and now companies kind of followed suit and are doing the same thing
Well, that's true. Well, they, they compete against one another and would you rather go to work for a place that had something like that? If you thought that you might be having a family? I think you would. And so pretty soon, Amazon and Starbucks and, uh, Microsoft had their own paid parental leave. And it turns out now that the state, from the state legislature is going to put in, uh, their program and everybody in the entire state will be entitled to paid parental leave. That's pretty amazing.
That is amazing. Thank you for that.
Well, I, I feel really good about it. And when we started, we only had four weeks of paid parental leave and now it's 12. Twelve seems to be a, a pretty good number.
Do you think that governments have to take the lead before companies and organizations really maybe get pushed or get encouraged to do something?
Well, it certainly doesn't hurt. I mean, I think, um, companies could be, uh, an example as well if they wanted to do so, but very often they have shareholders who insist that they make as much profit as possible, whereas at least with a city, you have a little bit more opportunity to do the thing that is right.
But it just probably takes longer, I would imagine.
Everything takes longer than you think.
Well, I mean, government, it just, it seems like it's such a big ship to turn with a government, like it just seems like with, you know, what you hear is all the red tape. It's really difficult to get those, those things passed.
Well, when I ran for office, uh, you don't laugh, please. I said that one of the things that I was going to do if elected is that I would help take down the Alaskan Way Viaduct. And that was in '03, when I was making that promise. And it is down now, 15 years later.
Well, it was a big undertaking though, too.
Well, it only took, you know, uh, let's see, me and my fellow council members, two mayors, the governor, a bunch of state legislators, but we finally did it.
Were you happy with the tunnel decision?
Oh, absolutely.
You think that's better than?
It seemed to me it was very important. Well, no, you, see, we have reclaimed the entire waterfront. We have made Seattle a much better place.
Not yet. There's still too much construction down there.
Yes, I know, I know. I know, but it will be.
It will be, right.
Another 15.
Yes, yeah, maybe.
Well, I mean, when you think about San Francisco, they took down a freeway on their waterfront. And it took them for, it, it has taken them a good many years, 20 years, and they're still, uh, developing.
Okay, I didn't know that. So the, the, the reason for my line of questioning there is because I think about climate change and I think about the things that are affecting the climate. And who is really, who is going to need to drive this before we start making changes? Before we really understand the effect of it, of climate change on the environment? And, and I think about this and I think, like, I'm vegetarian, right? And I always, and I always say, you know, do you know how much?
By the way, that's awfully good for you.
So I hear. I feel pretty good with it. But I, I hear that it takes so much water to make one hamburger, you know, to, to, to feed the cattle, you know, to, to actually have, it's like 22 gallons of water, like a month's worth of water or something. So I can, I can play my part and I can do my things and I can buy carbon offsets, but it seems like it isn't going to really make any kind of a big effect until either big companies or the government comes in, be it local or national, to really make an effect, you know, really affect things. But do you, I guess what I'm hearing from you, because you said that companies can make changes.
They can.
Do you see it possible for individuals to really force a change?
Well, I think it will happen and I think it is happening. I mean, when you think about the fact that we do things much more, much differently than we used to. Think about Seattle, for instance. We, uh, were very early in, uh, getting rid of plastic bags.
Mm-hmm, true.
We, I carry my own sack to the grocery store when I go, don't you?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And we will probably be getting rid of those little other plastic bags by using net bags to catch our vegetables in. So, uh, we are beginning to do those sorts of things. We sort our garbage. We have compostables and recyclables and trash. And we made a big difference in that regard. It's not enough, but we keep doing it. And when I was, uh, chair of, um, uh, the Seattle Public Utilities, I was very, uh, big on getting the commercial, um, uh, the businesses to do the same sorting that people did in their own homes, which was, it took quite a, quite an extra thing to do, but it was important to do. Uh, there would be people who would come in and say, "Oh no, we would, don't have enough room in our storage area. We can't sort things. How do we do that?" And we said, "You do it."
You figured it out, yeah.
And, uh, construction waste, that was something that we used to just throw in the landfill. These are things that now are redone. Even when we took down the Alaskan Way Viaduct, we ground up the cement to use again. I mean, think about that.
Right. There was a lot of cement there.
Yes.
There was a lot. So it really, it's going to take a concerted effort, everybody involved.
Yes, exactly. And I think, thinking about things of that sort is very, very important. I don't think anything about it anymore. The only thing is when I go to, uh, another part of the country and I see them with their plastic bags going to the grocery store.
And no recycling, yeah.
I know. I mean, it just grates. I mean, you know that we have set a good example. Seattle has been very much in the forefront of a lot of this.
Yeah, true. I know when I go back east and I buy one or two items at the grocery store and they try to give me a bag and I say, "I don't need a bag." They look at me like, "What? You don't need a bag?" It's like, I'm walking with my two items.
Exactly, why would we need a bag?
No, it's crazy. Do you see hope for the future?
Well, yes, I do. I think the very fact that young people are involved in so many of the things, I get very excited about the fact that they are concerned about climate change and also things like gun control. I mean, gun control has been one of the very sad, sad situations in our country. We don't have to live like cowboys. No, definitely not.
We don't. We certainly, we certainly do though. Somebody had asked me to ask you a question.
Sure.
So I
Ask anything except what I gained when I was a restaurant critic.
How much did you gain when you were a restaurant critic?
Can't tell.
Okay. Cause now I want to know.
I knew that.
I have a, what's called a Patreon platform where listeners support me through that platform and I give, I give my Patreon supporters the opportunity to ask questions. So Nancy, who actually lives here in Seattle, she wanted to know what you think of the current Seattle City Council.
Well, I would say that, uh, sometimes they do make me unhappy. There's nothing about being in a particular position and then looking over your shoulder when somebody is doing it after you. I mean, for instance, when I wrote a, wrote a, uh, editorials for the PI, which I did before I was a columnist, um, I couldn't read the editorial page for several, for at least a year after I left it, because I was sure that they weren't doing things right. So there are things that I would do differently. Uh, there are things that I'm glad that they did do. I mean, uh, the council has not been all, all wrong. I think sometimes that I get rather unhappy, at least with one of them that keeps telling you that you are corporate lackey and tells you that every Monday morning, whether you want to hear it or not. Uh, I think, uh, could be more, a bit more constructive and more productive.
Is that our socialist, uh, okay?
Yes, 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 yes. And, uh, maybe she's good to be there as an irritant, I don't know. Keeps people from feeling too pleased with themselves.
Did she win reelection?
Yes, and made it.
Yeah, gosh, okay. Well, I, I don't know too much about her, what she's doing, but I think
But I would say that, uh, I, I, for the most part, I think we probably can look forward to, uh, the renewed city council, uh, on, in January. Three of the new people are, uh, former aides to other council members. So you have a certain continuity, which is kind of interesting and maybe even rather good.
But also, but still fresh, then?
Yes.
Fresh ideas, but with some, but with
New eyes.
Yeah. And, and also, and I personally know Nancy and she has another question here too, and I'll give you a little bit of background.
Sure.
Nancy, she lived for a long time in Finney Ridge? For years and years and raised her daughter. She and her husband raised a daughter there. And she and her husband just recently decided they were fed up with Seattle and they wanted to move. And she and her husband just recently decided they were fed up with Seattle and they wanted to move. They ended up, I think they, they either bought or they're renting, I think they bought a condo on Lake Union. And they're staying local for now. But I know that she's been frustrated with Seattle and I think it's the growth and the traffic. But they stuck it out. And so, and I'm giving you that backstory because she has another question here. I wanted you to have some context with it. And I am putting some words in her mouth, but I think it's because I, I know where she's coming from. But she says, what do you think Seattle needs to do to get back on track?
Back on track? Oh, I don't know that we're necessarily off track. I would say that we do need to build more affordable housing. We built an awful lot of it. In fact, people don't realize how very much we have built over here in Magnuson Park, just across the way. Building nine now has 148 apartments.
Are they really affordable though?
Yes, I think so. I mean, they're not, they're not low income. They are what they call affordable, which is more like working families can live there. And there are several three bedrooms. And there is an onsite childcare and a clinic. This is the largest building you ever saw. It's a block long. And it's a very, very big improvement. It'll be hopefully for people who work, say, at Children's Hospital, people who are at the University of Washington possibly, working there. This is, this is a good thing.
Is this city subsidized or city owned?
It is called Mercy Housing and it does have some components of federal, not federal, but state money in it.
But privately owned?
It is a nonprofit.
Oh, okay.
It is a nonprofit. And they also have another development, Mercy Housing in South Seattle. So it isn't something that is just brand new to us. It is something that is practiced and works well.
Do you still love Seattle?
I adore Seattle.
Do you?
I mean, you know, I don't have any other roots. I mean, I couldn't give you the town that I lived in, you know, one of the 116 that I came before there. No, this would be
You don't get, you don't get frustrated with traffic or with growth?
Of course I get frustrated with traffic. How can anyone not get frustrated with traffic? You know, the taking down of the tunnel or the viaduct and putting into the tunnel and some of the construction has been very bad. But I do think that Seattleites are becoming very used to public transportation. And if we can possibly defeat this latest stupidity of Tim Immons, 976, why we will continue to build rapid transit, which is very important, people getting around. We now know that about half of the people who go to work in downtown Seattle go by public transport or bicycle or walking.
Yeah, I saw that the number increased by about 14% or something, the number of people who are taking taking public transportation now.
And some people even go by skateboard, although I wish they would get out of the middle of the street.
Well, there's, and there's more electric bikes and there's more, there's more alternate, alternatives that people are taking for sure.
But of course I get frustrated. Everybody would like to get places faster.
Yeah, it's frustrating for me in West Seattle, being in West Seattle.
Well, West Seattle isn't as bad in some places.
No, it's not. No. And I've just learned that I, if I go somewhere, that I take a road that has a street light so that I'm not stuck trying to, you know, frogger my way out.
Exactly. You get, you get to learn, you learn to navigate.
Well, Jean, is there anything, I know we, we were just kind of all over the place a little bit in terms of our conversation, but I have to just say it was delightful to sit down with you and to get to know you better and hear your history. Cause I, I think
I enjoyed, I enjoyed being with you both. You're a very good interviewer.
Oh, well, thank you. And I, I really appreciate that.
Ask the tough questions and don't even make me tell you how much I gained.
No, you can tell me offline about that after I stop recording. You know, I do have one other question. I have a couple of other questions, short ones. But one that comes to mind is, how do you stay motivated? Have you ever had a point in your life where you have, like, I just think depression is so prevalent in our society right now. And I'm just wondering, is, when you were 70 and you were thinking, what am I going to do now? Did you have to find a purpose and say, you know what, I'm going to run for city council? Or has everything just really kind of come natural to you and you
Well, I was kind of accidental in some respects. I've been fortunate. I feel really, really fortunate to have had the experiences that I've had and I'm very, very lucky to have been elected to office three times. I mean, I, I think that's quite remarkable because they weren't, they weren't electing a new young person. They were electing me, which was really quite amazing to me. And I've always felt very connected to those folks who come up to me and say, gee, you look familiar. Where do I remember you from? I love it.
But you, there hasn't been a pause in your life or a time where you
Once in a while, everybody might feel kind of depressed. I know after I left office, I locked my door for the last time at city hall. I was kind of behind. It was Christmas and I had not done my shopping yet. And I was really concerned about the fact, I only had a week left and I had to do it. And I got up the next morning and I showered very early because I was going to go out shopping and started to dress and I fainted and I collapsed on the floor of the bathroom upstairs. And my son was making coffee downstairs and he heard the noise and he went up and immediately called 911. Well, I had a blockage in one of the veins to my heart.
My goodness.
They, I had, I found myself with six firefighters in my bathroom. And one of them was a woman, thank goodness. And they, I put on my bath, they put on my bathrobe and took me off to the emergency ward and found that they put a stent in my heart. And after they got through with that, they decided that I had blood clots in one of my lungs.
Oh, my goodness. Wow.
And I had to stay in the hospital overnight and start taking medicine to dissolve the, the blood clots. And I lay there in bed, listening to the sounds in the hospital, as you do in hospitals are very noisy places, and decided, oh my God, it's too late. And it's not only too late for me, Christmas shopping, but also because I've never written down on any of my stories that I was going to tell. And that was when I wrote the book.
No kidding. So this was the day after you locked the door
Yes, yes.
At the city council.
Yes.
So your body was just telling you, okay, time to take a break.
Well, anyway, I was lucky. I was very fortunate. If there hadn't been anybody in the house that would hear me faint, who knows what would have happened. But I was rushed off. I can't believe how fast they got me to the emergency ward and got things done. And the hospital and all the medical people, wonderful, absolutely amazing. University of Washington Hospital, by the way. Let's say good things for them. And now I don't have to be on that silly dissolving thing anymore. Possibly from sitting too, too many public hearings, I guess. Anyway, that's how the book got there and that's how the next book is going to get there. And if you've got something that you've got to do, you can't be depressed.
Yeah, that's true. You've got to have a purpose.
Yes.
Yeah, to keep doing it. What does it mean to you? I like to end these conversations with a specific question. What does it mean to you to be bold?
Well, I guess to be not afraid. I mean, you know, when you put out a book, you are asking for one more time for people to, you know, criticize something that you might have done, say, ugh, piece of junk. Don't buy that one. But no, I, I think that being bold is to get out there and, and do it. I mean, you could have looked silly.
But you do it anyway.
You do it anyway.
And are you on social media or do you, like, can people find you on a website or a social media or anything?
I see what you mean. No, probably not. I did have a website when I was a council member. Re-elect Jean Godden, I think it was, or something like that. But I am on Facebook and people can find me. You found me there.
I did find you there, yeah. I tracked you down. So what I'll do is in the show notes, I will link to your book. I'll link to your radio program so people can hear that.
That would be good.
And West, which I
West Side Seattle.
West Side Seattle. Yeah, I don't know why I can't keep that in my mind because it's my neighborhood paper, but the West Side Seattle.
Well, it would, in your case, it would probably be the West Side, the West Seattle Herald.
Herald. It is the Herald. That's what's confusing me.
That's one of the four community papers.
Right, yes, yes.
The Ballard paper and
Right. Got it. Okay. Well, I'll link to that. And just thank you so much for your time and, and sharing your story.
Oh, my gosh. I mean, can you thank me for talking that much about myself? I may bore the heck out of everyone.
No, not at all. You're a true inspiration. Thank you so much, Jean.
You're welcome.
She is really an inspiration to me. She's an example of how one can grow older gracefully and healthily. And really, I think it's so important to keep your mind active and always curious. You know, it was once believed that our brains were basically hardwired and wouldn't change as we aged. Meaning, well, there would be decline, right? But we couldn't really improve. But research that took place in the latter half of last century, in the 20th century, it proved that our brains can change. And that's why we've realized that doing word puzzles or words with friends, as Jean does, is so important. It keeps the brain active and keeps those neurons firing. Okay, I think probably what you're going to go do now is you're going to go download Words With Friends. For links to all the things we chatted about in this episode, go to she'sboldpodcast.com/episodes. And there you will find the show notes for this and all of my other conversations. You can also find those links and show notes in whatever podcast app it is you're using to listen to this. Don't forget, if you'd like to support the show and let me know how much you are inspired by these conversations and how much you look forward to hearing all of these uplifting stories, go to she'sboldpodcast.com/patreon. Patreon supporters become part of our private Facebook group and get access to some really fun bonus content. Don't forget to check out my tours at wander tours.com. We've got a few spots on the Women Only Tour to Morocco in February. But if you're interested in that, you're going to have to act fast because we got to get rooms reserved for that. And we've got some spots on the Coed Papua New Guinea tours in August of 2020. You can connect with me by friending me on Facebook and I am on Instagram at both Beth Witwa, B E T H W H I T W A. And I'm posting a lot of Epic Five photos there. That's, those are the Hawaiian races that I did. You know that already. But you can also find more travel-y stuff on Wandergal. That's Instagram. Ladies, you can join the Be Bold Facebook group at facebook.com/groups/BeBoldGroup for support and encouragement for whatever ways you're trying to be bold. Thanks for joining me for another episode of the She's Bold Podcast and until next time, be bold.